It is 3:00 PM, April 7th, 2016, time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors. We have a quorum. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. If you have a noise-making machine like this, would you please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting? If you wish to speak to the board, there are forms by the door to give to the manager, and that is your cue, Mr. Manager. Do we have folks who would like to speak to the board?
Yes, sir. You have one, Mr. Ed Tinkle, on item 5C.
Afternoon. Ed Tinkle, Ben Pine Drive. Relative to 5C, you have on the agenda that you're going to be talking about Pestoia and Pareto later on. Two issues that I have, one, do the easy one, representing the Gateway Greens Community Homeowners Association today, and as a board member on the Gateway Golf and Country Club them also. We are all very concerned with the approval of the Pestoia section as it is shown on the plans because of the inability to protect the access and security of Gateway Greens and the privatization of the country club itself along the 13th hole. We would ask that you revisit that with the developer, with the possibility of along that access road to be built sometime in the future, something be done to protect our HOA. And essentially, what I'm looking at is some type of a wall fence that would prevent people from coming across and coming into our community and eliminating our access control. The second item I have goes back to this whole issue with the approval. I'm looking at, and I brought three documents, Tony, you'd sent me just a plethora of documents talking about the area that is now known and identified as Arborwood Preserve Phase III. I'm looking at three documents specifically, four documents specifically, from DRIs in 2011 through 2013 that specifically show that property in Pelican Preserve. And I have gone back through all of the readings, looking for either the word exclusion of that property from Pelican Preserve and/or the changing of it to Arborwood Preserve, and find none. My question is, is that what was the procedure? Was there something that was done? I don't think it was done by this board, but what was done that was able to take an area that was definitively shown as being in Pelican Preserve, that 45, 50 acres, immediately east of holes 11 and 12 on the country club and west of Gateway Greens Community Association? How did that get out of Pelican Preserve and into Arborwood? I don't understand that.
If the board wants to be to address the board on that, those questions?
Would you please?
Yeah, I will try. In the packet of materials, the, one of the documents that was provided in Tetra Tech memo, there are a number of maps and graphics, and at page 137, it shows the 2012 deannexation of 185 acres. The next page shows the 2014 annexation of 180 acres into Pelican Preserve by the city of Fort Myers. And then the next page is Lee County's action in 2015 where they confirmed that that 180 acres was not in the Gateway DRI but is in the Pelican Preserve DRI. So that's why that 180 acres in Pestoia is within the Pelican Preserve DRI. As far as a developer calling a development Arborwood Preserve Phase III, our understanding it is located within Pelican, within Gateway, DRI, but they can call, it's not within the Arborwood CDD.
I understand that.
They're calling it Arborwood Preserve Number Three, and they're allowed to call it any name they want to, as long as the city and or county approve it. It doesn't have any legal significance as to which district it's in or whether it's in the city or county, it's just that's the name of their development. Andy, do you disagree, or?
So it's that simple?
Yes, sir. Do you have comments?
Okay. Well, I'll go back then and rely on the first one. We do have concern about the Pestoia approval of those plans with the fact that it leaves Gateway Greens quite open.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, others?
No, sir.
I was sure that I saw another person.
Oh, no, she just needed some information, which was provided, and she says she's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Are we ready for committee reports? Item three. Stony Brook minutes are there. Is there someone from Stony Brook that wants to represent?
Mr. McCulca.
I didn't even see him.
I didn't expect that call that fast. Hi, Joe McCulca, Chairman of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee. And I guess I'm here for to discuss the minutes for February and January. Somehow January got skipped over. And does anyone have any questions?
I do not necessarily for you, this is probably for April. I had a question from our board president earlier in the week about when we can expect to have our jogging paths, he and I come in and do the jogging path. It seems to be delayed, and the path is deteriorating to the point where we're now getting pretty good-sized holes in it, and we've already had one person that's tripped and fallen. And we've put cones up there, but we're getting to where this is a serious liability issue, and that's a liability issue for the district, because the district owns that accident.
Yes, it's on my desk now. I was addressing that earlier today, and I've got to regroup on it to see what the status was when we left off. I guess it's already been discussed at one point in time, and find out if it's in the budget now, or if we need to put it in the 2017 budget.
You know, it's in the budget now, because the HOA has, had decided to put in part of the monies for that. Isn't that right, Joe?
I'm sorry. You're not finished.
No, I don't have an agenda. I wanted to talk a little bit discussion.
You got me a little quicker. What was the question? I'm sorry.
We're talking about the jogging path.
That's correct. I'm aware of that.
Talked about the fact that it was the money in the budget, or do we need to move this to 2017? But we had already worked that out.
Oh, yeah, we had resolved that.
Yeah, I thought the board had approved it, and I thought Stony Brook was spearheading it.
Yes, that's correct. And in fact, the president, Paul Kilmire, had been involved with the original negotiation and timing. I think what Paul wasn't necessarily aware of is that the idea, and it was a very good quote, and that the gentleman, I think it's PMI's name of the company, actually was going to try to coordinate the installation of that walkway with the paving of the road, and that obviously has been pushed back, and that's the delay, I believe. Now, if you could say when the road's going to get paved, you can probably get a pretty good idea when the walkway will get paved.
That was his question, is, you know, I mean, the walkway is really deteriorating.
It is bad shape, I agree. I'm not sure what you can do, because I'm not sure how you can move up the schedule on the, on Gateway Boulevard there. There's a chain of events that have to occur.
Do we know when that section is actually scheduled to be done?
I, I.
That's half the light poles, right?
Yeah, I understand there's a back order on the light poles, is that correct? Any idea on timeline on that?
Well, we're hopeful that it'll be done by the end of June, but now we continue to run into little snap leaves, so I don't want to commit. That's our current target. But we're trying, we're trying to make sure that we do things in order. We don't want to have the electric poles installed and then, or new pavement, and then the equipment's coming in to install the electric poles, because it's going to be important. We don't want to tear up the pavements.
If that's a delay that Stony Brook wouldn't like, we could always look at a quote from a smaller firm that might be able to do good work at the same price.
I really like the job he's done so far.
Yeah.
Rather than bring, I'm sure not bringing that, but you know, I just wanted to, we're very happy what we've seen him do so far, and I think you are, Ann, that.
I think we're looking more just for an update, because, you know, people are asking, because we'd already committed to do it, so.
We're going to have our own board meeting on Monday, and then I have a advisory meeting on Wednesday. If it's an issue and the board makes it something, I'll bring it up at the Wednesday meeting of the advisory committee, okay? Also, while I have the opportunity, I just want to say that I didn't get back to you on the, oh, Superman bill, but I just heard back from JT. I was waiting also to hear from him, make sure it was okay with him. We're good to go on that. And that, yeah, it's something concerning, we can pay that bill. On the February, I just want to mention, I don't know if you, that's why I grabbed the agenda, I wasn't sure if it's been discussed yet or not, but the, we had a substantial amount of landscape we wanted to do to the tune of a little over $13,000. And normally, since it's coming out and it is budgeted, you know, normally we just would have handled it, but I guess April felt there was a $10,000 limitation in your authorization, is that correct?
It's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, okay.
Yeah, it is. It's on the agenda.
Okay, no problem, then we're good to go on that. I don't think there'll be any discussion on that. While I am here, though, I'd like to take a quick moment. We had discussed this already, and it has to do with changing our security firm and therefore our contract, and we'd like to put that new contract in Gateway's name. And it has been, I believe, already run by Tony?
I haven't touched my review. I started it, but I saw that that was the concept.
Okay, and I'm not sure, Margaret, did you turn a copy of that contract in yet or not? I can do that today, or I could do it on Wednesday? Okay, I thought you had a copy of it. I'll need the post order, and I wanted to know, and I got a certificate of insurance, was there anything else I needed in that package, so I could be prepared for that?
I'd like to hear a good reason for why you wanted it in the name of Gateway.
$9,000.
Which is for?
Sales tax. Otherwise, there's no change in liability or anything else like that, we'll still manage the situation. If you want to alter the existing contract to make an addendum to it, have no problem with that. It's just a simple financial circumstance, nothing changed. In fact, it makes the processing of the bills, I think, easier, because right now, we're paying it and then submitting, which I believe you also do at Pelican, submitting for reimbursement, which is one extra step. This way, the bill will come directly to Gateway, you'll pay it out of the budget, and it'll be clean and cut, and just won't be any sales tax on it. In fact, I suggest you guys consider it.
Well, I'm always happy to consider it.
Saving money's a good thing.
Are you finished? There's at least one board member that wants to ask a question.
I'm, go ahead, Rod, I'm good for you.
Will you refer to me?
I was referring to Mr. Newval.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Gary over there.
I don't want you guys arm wrestle over there. He's wearing red, it's, it's fine.
Where gentleman in the corner, yeah? Thanks for coming, Joe. First, on the, on the subject of the $8,000, I just want to ask Tony, are we in any legal disadvantage by agreeing to this? And I'm in favor of saving $8,000 in tax, but was there, are we at any legal disadvantage?
There's always liability when you have a direct contract, when you have somebody acting on your behalf, and that's when we have the insurance and the whole harmless indemnification of the typical provisions. And typically, districts do enter into access control agreements directly with the vendor itself. And arguably, we'd still have liability if the association's vendor was to engage in activities, we'd be named regardless.
Regardless, I think.
So it's a matter, there's always, there's always exposure, and I don't think the risk is greater than it is now.
Thanks. The other question is this, Joe, we're coming up to budget time. Stony Brook, when was it built, like, early 2000s? When did you, when did the first roads go in?
Well, that's a good question. I got to say, I bought my contract, signed my contract late 2003, there were no roads, so sometime during 2004, roads went in.
Okay, so we're like 12 years in.
Yeah.
I noticed on page 210 that you're putting $10,000 into the 004 fund for.
Basic general reserve, correct.
Yeah. I'm thinking about road reserves, and I'm, there's clearly not much in 004, but am I assuming that road reserves are in your master HOA fund?
We can do that, but also, and I believe that our president, Paul Kilmire, did come here to discuss that once before, and we talked about the approach that we would like to do, since we as residents paid that bond off, paid for these roads, and I, and I think that Supervisor Feinberg is in agreement with me on this, that we would like to see if we needed roads, and we still have a lot of years to go on those roads. We prefer to explore the bond issue at that, at that point in time, or possibly go into debt, but for us to pay for the roads twice, I don't think, you know, I doubt I'll be living there when the roads need to be done.
I'm just asking a question. Are you, are you putting reserves into the master HOA fund for these roads?
Specifically for roads, no, but we do have substantial reserves in the HOA fund.
Sure, and is it appropriate not to put them in the 004?
I, I, I'm not sure that I agree that we need them for the roads, simply because of the option that we have as part of the CDD to be able to bond the roads if necessary.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Gary, did you have something?
Yeah. There seems to be an awful lot of discussion in these two groups of minutes that just kind of came out, maybe not correctly, but maybe correctly. How much of the landscaping is the CDD involved in with Stony Brook?
Only on land that CDD owns. So these, these changes are, that are being approved right here for the 13,000 and some odd dollars are strictly areas along Pebble Brook or the cul-de-sacs at the ends of the, you know, secondary roads. There is no, there is no landscaping money out of here being spent on common element or private property.
Well, the spending is, it seems like, there seems to be, and maybe it's this meeting, in this meeting book, that we're starting to be asked to, or steered to, take on additional responsibilities that I think, all of those additional responsibilities mean additional staff time means additional staff, means additional costs, which become convenient for the person that gets that, but becomes inconvenient and unfair for the rest of the community that's paying a part of it.
The rest of the community is not paying a part of it.
There is no money coming out of the rest of the community.
Again, I didn't get, but thank you for jumping in there and defending, but that just seemed to be a lot of the impression in the book, and it's also triggered by another thing that's going to be coming up a little later in the book, and in the meeting, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
Well, just, just in response to that, just, there's always been the issue of what is Gateway money and where it comes from. And while this is a Gateway fund, it's the 004 Gateway Fund specifically for Stony Brook, all that money comes out of Stony Brook, and I give you my word, all that money gets explicitly spent on Gateway-owned assets. No, nothing else.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Anything? Thank you.
Okay, we're going to Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee minutes of January 14th and February 11th. Nancy Hall is here to join us. Are you going to take us through, or do you have things that you want to clarify, or how would you like to proceed?
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to look and see that that's what I was supposed to be doing, so do you have any questions on those minutes? I know you have an update from Phil on what we're doing, and I'm happy to go over that. Were there questions on our minutes?
I, I think if I don't ask it, Ed Tinkle will ask it, or Rod will ask it, et cetera. What is the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee's position on the separation between Gateway and Pistachio?
Between Gateway and?
I think it's.
They got David's attention.
I think he meant Pestoia.
Oh, Pestoia? This, that was total news to me, as far as I know, and I've looked at that DRI going back to the very original DRI several years ago, and I don't recall seeing anything, as much work as we've done on it, that, except for the five acres or whatever that was under the utility poles this last time, I think the 185, the 180, the whatever it was, has always been part of Pelican, and nothing that's currently built in Arbor Way, as far as I'm concerned, was even part of that in the beginning. So, that's all I know.
Good answer was pulled over our eyes. Do you have other questions?
No. So there's really kind of, it's not maybe.
It's kind of nebulous, it sounds like.
Well, Arborwood is its own development, part of which I understand is Gateway property, and part of it is part of the Arborwood CDD, which isn't part of Gateway.
But there is a mention later in, in here with that regarding the fact of a, not a wall, as we're pretty well used to.
Oh.
Let's let the engineer answer that.
Is he the one? Oh, I'm sorry.
We can, we can.
I know we want, I know we'd love to build a huge wall all around Pelican, but I'm not.
We're paying him, so we can blame him.
Large wall, gun turrets, very good.
Nancy, I have one question.
Sure.
In the documents that were prepared for this meeting, there was a statement, and I paraphrase, that the investments that the PPAC wanted made were not exactly made that way by our.
By severance.
Treasurer. Is that all resolved, or would you like to give me a little extra information?
I don't know that it has been resolved. The fact is that they were invested differently than what we reported to you. I don't think there's an issue with us having the amount or even with the timing of it, it's just that it was done, we said we wanted to take a million, too, and stagger it out with monthly maturities, you know, going out every 12 months. And the point of fact, it was a different, it went to 1.8 million, I think. And I think our new financial person, Nancy Olson, which, she's the one that should be getting all the stuff, not me, that Nancy Olson is supposed to come to us at our meeting next week with what the discussions with Stephen have been.
Okay, so may I presume that if there was displeasure with it after that meeting, we'll hear about it?
Right, we, we want to understand why it was done the way it was done when we had explicitly come to you and asked for permission to do it a certain way.
Thank you. Any other questions for Nancy?
Stephen is on his way, so he'll be here shortly.
Well, we'll just ask him about it when he gets here. Nancy, did you have anything that you wanted to give to us?
Yeah, a couple of things. The, first of all, Phil did a report from our last meeting, it's not the minutes, but it's a report from the last meeting. We had a resignation, and remember, we have subsequently gone out and asked for interest. I know of at least one person who's expressed an interest, and we're going to be looking at that and anybody else who has an application, and by the time we have our meeting next week. And then, once we, we vet that information, we'll be back to you with what we're recommending.
For our viewing audience, give us the name of the person that resigned, please.
Herb, yeah.
Freeze.
Freeze resigned.
Any other, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Are you finished?
You want more? No, about that topic, yeah.
Please continue.
Okay. One of the things I noticed when I looked at Phil's report that, that he didn't have in it is it's our intention to rebid our landscape contract. That is coming, it's been enough years, and a contract is up in the next couple of months, so we think it's time to go out and just rebid that. So we're working with the HOA management to put together what's needed to go forward. Now, they will be the ones that go out and bid the contract, but it'll come back to PPAC and then to you all for approval, once we decide what we want to do.
And you have, you have additional property that needs to be maintained if more houses are installed, is that correct?
We're looking at that with the budget. There very well is more property that will, will need to be maintained. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about, and I see it is on the agenda, April, is we have some work that needs to be done on one of our monuments, or on our front tree line monuments, to the tune of a little over $14,000. Just so you know, we have the money in our budget, we didn't budget it for that, but we think we've got room to accommodate it, accommodate it in this year's budget.
Well, that, we have something else to talk to Mr. Bling about then, don't we?
I believe you are welcome to. But I noticed it is on the agenda, so.
Yes.
That's all I had, unless you had more questions.
Questions for Nancy? Thank you very much.
Okay.
May I have a motion to accept the committee reports that have just been given to us?
We didn't do landscape.
Why, Joe, we didn't? I have my finger over there. Thank you, thank you so much. Is there someone here to represent the Landscape Advisory Committee? Well, please come forward.
Get me Kathleen.
We've got twins.
I've got twins. Thank you. Please come forward. Tell us what's going on with the palm trees.
She's going to sit back down.
Those, those are not the subjects of the night, to be honest.
You really want to know what's going on with the palm trees?
Just give, just, if you have, if you have a report for us, please give it. I was just trying to get a little humor into the meeting.
The only, what I, we have is for a resolution, you have that? Okay, and it's to add an alternate to the landscaping committee, because it seems to be that we keep losing members on the landscaping committee and have to search for, if this way, if there is an alternate, we also will have a quorum. We also would have enough people to have a discussion for more input, and then if there's someone out, that person could vote.
I've got a, I've got a few things, opinions on this. I had a meeting this morning with your chairman, breakfast meeting with JB, and I discussed this amongst a lot of other stuff, wanted his opinion, his input. And also, I had a meeting with, with Bill Pricey after that onsite for two hours at Stony Brook this morning. Thanks, Joe, for setting the parking and so on. As far as this particular item is concerned, I, I'm not in favor of, of doing what you're suggesting. I think we need a landscape committee that is committed of five people who come to these meetings, and clearly, if, if, if there's a good reason why they can't make it, then that's understandable. And I think they, I haven't read, I think this says three, what, what your chairman told me this morning is that if you miss three consecutive meetings, that you're out. I would suggest perhaps we reduce that to two, because you only meet once a month for one hour, and I don't think that's an imposition, unless you've got a good reason, you might be traveling, you might be sick, and so on. But I, I think the idea of inviting a third party with voting rights, who are really not part of your chemistry of the committee, doesn't seem to fit very well with me, and I think if there's a person who's not showing up, I think that person should be replaced. That would be my thought on this. And the other reason for your suggestion is to make a quorum, right? Now, a quorum is what, three out of five?
Three out of five.
What if it was seven? Is that, would a quorum be four in that case, Tony?
Just trying to see what it says here as far as the quorum might be. Generally, it's the majority of the members of the board, or the membership of the board generally.
So seven is really not going to help matters, is it? If you're having trouble getting qualified people on the committee who are committed. I understand you're only meeting once a month. I would like to see things move along a little quicker personally, but you have your own agenda, and you have your own timeframes. I know your chairman is fully employed by the city of Fort Myers, so there'll be certain.
Did you suggest that to him?
I'm sorry?
Did you suggest two meetings a month to JB?
I, I suggested that it'd be good if you could meet more frequently, and I think he'd be open to talking with you about that.
We could get more done.
I know. But this is, this item is not about how frequently you meet, this item is about making up a quorum, whether you can invite a third party into vote, and I don't support it. I think you need to, my pitting is, we need to focus on committee of people who are showing up regularly. But if you don't show up twice, I think you should be replaced, that would be my thought.
I have a question, legal question. In some committees, you know, past life, the quorum was determined by the, whoever showed up. In other words, anybody who showed up was sufficient to make a quorum.
The board could adopt a resolution to indicate that for this committee meeting, this committee, it could set a number, less than a majority of the membership.
Pardon?
It could set a number less than a majority of the membership of the group, but you'd have to, how many members are on there, five?
Five.
Five, you'd have to, you have at least three, I mean, two would not be a good quorum.
But I'm, what I'm, excuse me, just saying.
I'm sorry.
What, what I'm trying to ask you is, could this board say that a quorum of this committee is whoever shows up?
That could be one.
I'm not sure they could do that.
That could be one, right, that could be one, but at least they could contract some business.
I've never heard of that.
Can I inject one thing?
Sure.
Having.
Having said that, it sounds like this is a charitable committee, meaning it isn't too meritorious with, hey, if anybody shows up, what the heck? You know? That's what it sounds like.
I don't disagree. But I was trying, I was trying to get a little bit of.
In my experience, I've never seen it established that way with that. There's always at least a minimum number.
I'll say that to you.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay, thank you. Always willing to learn.
Are you having difficulty getting three people to show up for your meetings? Is that what you're telling us?
At times, there are.
Is it frequent or occasionally? Because I would think if you've got five members and you can't get three to show up, it sounds like we don't have the right five.
That's not normal.
That's not normal.
Normally, when it first started, there was four men and myself.
Okay.
And we were there for every meeting. And then, two of the men had to drop off.
Okay.
Then a third man dropped off. So, myself and JB are the only two originals. So, now we're down to four people.
Okay.
Because the one that, the last one that they brought in, she's never showed up for any meetings. So, we've been having a quorum of three out of five, so we were able to do things. But we do need two more people, one for the board and one for an alternate.
So, that sounds like the new person needs to be removed and replaced.
Yes.
And then you still have an empty slot. So, we need to find two new people for your committee.
Yes.
I understand from you, sorry, did you finish?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. The chairman's said to me this morning, there is, the rules he's living with is three consecutive meetings, and then you have to be replaced. Who set, who set the number three? Is that you, is that the board or?
This coming up will be her third one.
Yeah, but who decided three? Is that your committee, or is it the board, or where did that come from?
We just, JB decided that.
Because I think maybe it's such a suggestion, it's down to two. I think three consecutive meetings.
Well, Diane said it was three.
Oh, no.
Diane told us that it was three.
Maybe the original resolution that set the committee.
Well, if you've got five people, you need a quorum to conduct them. So, that's where the three came from.
No, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as, I, Tony, do you know?
The, I believe the board, and I'm not sure, I have the most recent version, there's protocol and meeting procedures for committees established by the board. This board has adopted in the past, and that may indicate the amount of absences that would qualify as, the seat being vacant. I try to check real quick.
At the end of the day, this comes down to common sense. We're trying to really do something, we're trying to get some commitment here to raise the bar on landscaping in Gateway. You know what the mission is. You know, our heart and soul is in this, and it's potentially a lot of money. And I just feel we need five committed people who can show up every month. And if you miss two meetings, I think you should be replaced. I'd like you, maybe you can suggest that when you make that.
We can bring that up at the next meeting, and hopefully it'll pass, because I agree with you. We've got so much to do on this, rest of this boulevard.
Yes.
That we need everybody to come to the meetings, and we need them twice a month.
Right.
But the problem seems to be, you can't get five people. So, we're arguing the three versus two, but you can't get five. And so, it indicates the fact of, Pam will tell you what it indicates.
No, go on, I'm just agreeing.
It indicates one of a couple of things, or both things. A, there isn't the interest to bring in two more people, that there aren't two more people. Or, it's the fact that we haven't communicated enough to the community, the need for the two people and the real purpose and importance of the committee. It's a communication problem, I think, again. You see?
So do I.
Okay?
Well, now, we got that settled. How are we going to get two more folks to?
Well, how are we going to communicate? This becomes the question all the time. I have that question later on in the meeting, too. But go ahead. Any suggestions?
I didn't hear him.
You didn't hear me?
I didn't hear Gary. He said.
Gary said, we need some more communication.
Yeah. And we have, how many HOA and/or condo associations in this community? Just, you know, I'm not looking for the exact number. This is, you know, but sixty. How many of those HOA or condo presidents or management companies, et cetera, could we send an email to and ask them to communicate to those that they serve, which then brings out people? I've suggested this for numerous other items before, but nothing ever seems to get done.
More ideas, you mean?
No, to tell them, A, that there is, I bet you if you walked into the deli and walked up to somebody and said, "Do you live in Gateway?" Yeah. "Do you know anything about the Gateway Landscaping Committee?" I bet you wouldn't find anybody that did. That's something that we need to communicate, because if we are going to support you, we need to support you that way, too, by getting the people to, A, know that you're important.
That would be wonderful, because that would have taken care of all those emails and phone calls I got when those palm trees went in up there.
See, there are people that are interested.
You see? So, having said that, the origination of it needs to start here.
Gary's absolutely right. And I think we should direct staff to send out a note to the HOA.
That's a great suggestion, yes.
Not a problem.
Right, that's the right thing. I think Gary's absolutely right.
Well, we solved that, then. Thank you all very much. We'll send that out to the HOAs. Get a couple of folks to.
Hey, let us know this time that it works, or it doesn't.
And you want us to suggest twice a month?
That's, that would be my personal thought, but I don't represent the board.
Let's get five people, and then let's see.
Yeah, I think we should wait until we can get five people before we start making changes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Here we go.
So, this resolution that's being proposed is not going anywhere today?
That is correct.
Okay.
I would like to have the motion to accept the committee reports as item three, though.
So moved.
I'll second. Pam, Pam moved it, I'll second.
Thank you so much. Any further communication?
By the way, can we get to see what staff sends out to the HOAs so that we can see what's going on?
Yes, I will coordinate that.
That would be very nice. Okay.
On favor of accepting the committee reports, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you very much. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we did have one more request for public speaking. I don't know if you want to accept it, but, or if you want to move his item up. It's Mr. Caldwell on five-seat historia.
I think it would be delightful to hear from Mr. Caldwell. Please come to the podium, Mr. Caldwell.
I figured it'd be better to speak when the item comes up, because you might have questions. I'm available to answer questions. I didn't want to make a presentation.
Just feel free to just warm your seat until we get to that. Consent agenda.
Yep.
Members that want items A through F pulled for discussion, please so indicate, if you serve.
A, D, and E.
A, D, and E. Gary, I saw your hand.
Fairway Lakes Office Park Lighting.
That is E.
Yes. And I also, is that where we also have the status of the lakes?
No.
The condition of the lakes.
No, no, that's.
Four B is the staff report on that.
Yep. Let's, let's chat on it.
You want to talk, you want to talk about B?
Yeah, let's talk about that.
All right. We are A, B, D, and E. Margaret, anything else?
I have none.
Pam?
No, I have none.
All right. Might as well start with item A, and I think Rod is the one that mentioned that, so please bring this to our attention.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, page forty-six of the agenda. And I apologize for not having had the chance to review the archive of the last board meeting, which I was absent from. I'm looking at the top motion, the motion for ADT, that we asked, we asked staff if they would get references for that particular model. Was this discussed at the last board meeting? Have those references been sought?
I have one great reference. I have sent out several requests, and I am still trying to bird dog the second reference.
And what does the first one say?
That the equipment was great. They haven't had any, any problems. I've talked to Sharif about, you know, why we're having such problems, and he thinks that it's because probably the contact on the contract probably isn't the person actually using the equipment on the gate access. So, so I will, I will continue to bird dog that. I've got several out there.
Great.
That's the contact on the contract, not the contact on the electric.
Did you follow up on the second thing?
What?
The second part that Rod and I were involved in, about the drafted information that was supposed to be brought to the meeting today by staff.
For what?
Pool access cards. If you take a look at page forty-six, look at lines eighty-three through ninety-three.
Staff will present the draft information on pool access cards, including the dog park.
Yeah, the second box down is what you're referring to, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, yes. I missed that, but we have not put together, we have not put together the program yet on how we were going to manage the cards. But I do know, although I haven't, I haven't summarized it in a document yet, when we implement the new program, all of the pool cards are going to be re-initiated, and we're going to request the identifications as they come into the pool. So, we'll capture all of the pool access card renewals upon setup in the new software. And then, and then we will work on a routine schedule to get the dog park attendance re, I'm not sure what the word is, certified.
April, are you planning at some point in the future to have a full discussion on this?
I have documented in a program as far as how we're going to be administering these, these cards.
Right.
So, we have it documented to move forward with, and I think that that's to you.
I would appreciate a dedicated session at some point to discuss this whole card access talent, technology, and the way we monitor cars and charge for non-residents, or whatever we're going to do.
Right. And I've got that written down, that we wanted to consider a lost card fee, and so, yes, it's, it's on my desk.
With no date certain yet?
Um, no, but our parts have been ordered. We had a little snafu with the gate access, because we've had to change suppliers for our internet over there at the pool. Windstream is increasing their prices, so we had to switch up a little, a little bit of service. And so, now we're moving forward again. Parts are, should be here within the next two weeks, I believe. And we're looking at how we're going to get the data in the software right now, and we're moving forward, so. We're getting there.
Thank you.
Are we finished with A?
Yeah, thanks, April.
Mr. Newbauer wanted to talk about B.
I haven't finished with A yet.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Page forty-nine. Page forty-nine of the agenda. This refers to line one ninety-five. There was a thirty-five thousand dollar overrun that, Danny, you know about this. You're in the middle of this thing. It's KCCS, et cetera. And it says here on line one ninety-five that you will present a breakdown from KCCS. Did that occur at the last board meeting that I was not attending? That I didn't attend?
It was sent out electronically.
Okay, so was the board happy with what was presented? Bill?
I would say we were not terribly unhappy, but of happiness is not exactly the way we felt about the whole darn thing.
Satisfied, right? Okay. That's all, that was my other question. Thank you.
Are you finished with A? Mr. Newbauer, I bet it's number B, the field management report on the preserve.
Scan down to it. All right. Let's start with page fifty-three, if we may. Right at number one, it indicates that the water levels are receding, et cetera, and this gets into a topic that's always at the tip of everybody's tongue and at the tip of everybody's email blasts. So, if the water levels are receding, where are we then with all of the lake bank maintenance? Danny?
Chicken before the egg, cart before the horse.
Something like that, but it brought it up.
Well, I was going to save this for later, and I can, but there's, there's a process that we have to go through with SRF. Would you like me to share that now, or save that part for later?
If you feel more comfortable later, that's.
I'll save that part for later, but I will tell you that as it sits, the process is keeping away from the SRF. There's a design process and then the timing. And of course, I think probably before that March third, or whenever that report was, you know, we had talked about, because of the rains we had had, we were probably going to miss this dry season, which we will miss this dry season, which is okay. We have the pond banks that we were going to do in this dry season have been surveyed, and they're in design right now. So, once we get through the SRF process, those will, those will actually go out to bid, once we get through the SRF process and the pre-qualification process. So, that's essentially, you know, where we are. I will say, Lake one oh four or Pond one oh four is sitting out there in limbo. That is under contract with Extreme Divers, and they have given a date. I believe it's within the next couple of weeks. I think Rob may know, but Tyler's been, Tyler's been heading that up.
Month of May.
So, as soon as they get done with, with the work they're doing in Pelican Preserve, they're going to move straight over to finishing up one oh four. That's what they're currently under contract with.
Okay.
That's all we're under contract with right now for anything in Gateway. So, the next lakes have been surveyed, and they're in design for what we would have done this year. Those, there's no rush, because we need to get through the SRF process, or you won't have a funding mechanism for those.
And how long is that going to take, because somebody's got to be out there going, mentioning any dates?
I'll go over all of that specifically later.
Okay, not a problem.
But we're looking at August timeframe.
Okay.
Danny, well, well, just to complement Gary's point, I don't want to get into this SRF. Leave that till later, I agree. But I'm getting a lot of email traffic recently from Walden Lakes. We've talked about this with Tyler and you and I with Lake one two six. When is the official, in your mind, rainy season, when does it begin? At the point where we can't do any more pond bank restoration?
June is, is when we start to get the rain. So, so, and I will say that when we start to get the rains, in my opinion, May and at least the first part of June are essentially your driest, lowest periods, although the rains, June, July, August, September, those are your wettest months. So, although we will get the rain starting in June, those water levels won't start to rise really until, until July. That being said, you know, one oh four will be the next lake that we're, and I do have a memo on that from Tyler.
Yes.
One twenty-six, as we know, is a, is Harley's and Lynn Scott's, that's where, in Walden Run. And that, we've already started, that was the first area we piloted. That is one of the ponds that will be performed in this, in this next grouping.
Well, I know, I know that Walden Lakes is a huge lake, and talking to Tyler, you could perhaps divide it into phases and deal with the most urgent parts first.
Yes.
My question is, is that something you think you can put, is that on your schedule for this rainy season before mid-June?
It's not, but it, it can be. And it's, Tyler was actually working on a memo that actually would have a map showing what he was talking about. Unfortunately, Tyler was called to the fatherly duty of going to the hospital, so, for his next child. So, he did not get to finish that memo, so I could present that today, but.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, here we go. So, continuing on page fifty-three, if I may, if we go down on the bottom of page, second last paragraph, "Other residents, building, landscape, beds and or paved or patios near the lake easement, yada, 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 accelerate the washout issues. These areas, if not properly maintain, maintained." issues. These areas, if not properly maintain, maintained. Encourage Brazilian pepper, yada, yada, yada." And then down at the last paragraph, "So also the washout areas being intentionally filled with old trash." The question that I have is again the same one. What are we doing to communicate directly with these people about all of these things? I mean, I could go through every one of these pages with all of these different arrows, et cetera. And the thing that keeps coming up is, A, like on pa, bless you, Bill, on page fifty-six, we show these, I don't know, are they banana palms or whatever, or banana trees? They're there. We see all this junk. We've got red arrows. What are we doing to correct it? And if you say to me, well, it's already been corrected, then why didn't we hear that? But what are we doing to communicate with the people of all of these different things that need to be done? And that one washout area, which is then on page fifty-seven, what have we done to try to communicate to the people about proper piping and bubble ups and et cetera? Instead, we show where all of this erosion has occurred, but we don't come up with any solution. We don't come up with any action, and we sure don't come up with communication.
Communication, what L and Molly have been using is through the presidents, and I'm not sure exactly what's going on in this location, but I'll find out and get back with you.
Well, there's several other locations, Cal.
Yes.
So if all of these keep getting reported time after time after time, whatever method of communication that we're using isn't working. And also the campgrounds. What have we done about the campgrounds?
Uh, Molly's listed that a couple times, and what we have done is try and pull out everything, but you know, they keep coming back in. She's turned it over to, uh, the recreation department and asked that they, things be taken out, but, uh, they, they rebuilt.
Where is that location?
It's, it's in the preserve. Let's see if she's. Right. Yeah, well, it was there on, uh, when did she do this? In the March?
We took that, we took that.
Okay, so that's out.
Yes.
And they're still out? When's the last time it was visited or revisited?
Elle's on vacation, um, this week and next week, but I can definitely follow up with her and see how often we're doing those inspections. Yeah.
Communications, Cal, and April, look, again, Gary, we've talked about this before. Um, we, we're trying to communicate with six thousand people. The modern way is to send an email blast. Let's get straight to it. Well, we've talked about this before. April and I have been talking over the other night about getting Vista Logics onboard, and I know that this has to take its time. We need to be able to communicate with six thousand residents without having to go through this HOA business, uh, because we're only as good as, you know, the two, two or three steps we have to take there. And we can't get any int, we can't get an interaction coming back from the residents that way either. So, what I'm, again, I'm just saying, this substantiates the reason why we need to accumulate an email database, whether we do it internally or through a Vista Logics type third party, so we can get these messages out to people quickly and overnight. That's the modern way.
The, that's the modern way, but the reality of the situation is that anyone that provides us their email address, it becomes a public, uh, source that they can, uh, people can get a hold of.
Yes.
And so people are very reluctant to share their email address with the, with any public agency.
Well, the more people.
So the HOAs have been the easiest because they, they don't have that same restriction of public documents. So that's been the easiest, best, most effective way that we've had to be able to communicate with people.
I understand. That's all we can do right now.
Right.
Unless we, unless we, unless we expect people to visit our website and the traffic is pretty low.
Mm-hmm.
We've gotta be more proactive. We wanna get a message.
Now, we can, you know, become more of a cop without enforcement and physically go out and talk to people and, uh, do those things, but you know, that's just all timing.
A, we've gotta do something, and if it, and if it finally becomes the fact of, I'm just gonna keep, every month we get these reports and every month we get the same thing. So something isn't working. Secondly is the fact that email lists can be purchased. I, in my profession, can take a neighborhood and I can purchase a ton of emails in there. So my question becomes, if we did that, does that then become public information?
Yes.
Not because those people gave it to us, but because we purchased it through a third party.
Yes, it's a public record.
Still the situation.
That's correct.
However, and we've talked about this before, Tony, and you're willing to go and get an AGO if you're so requested, that this, that a third party could be a depository for our residents' email addresses, and that may avoid public record situation.
I don't wanna use the term avoid. The question is what, you know, once you're working with Vista Logics, the board has indicated the approach could be, be authorized to, uh, request a formal attorney general's opinion whether or not the record's maintained by the third-party vendor in a separate.
Right.
Remote fire-walled sort of location would be public records or not.
We've had this discussion before. The pictures that I'm looking at, at the moment, were the ones that were on the screen a few moments ago about the carrot wood and Brazilian pepper and all of that junk. Do you think that possibly a telephone call to these people might awaken that?
Actually, nothing is better than a, "Hi, I'm April, and I'm from the Gateway Services Community Development District. You've probably never even heard of who we are, but here's what we do, and let me try to help you with a problem that you've got that's also affecting us." Now, that person having seen a person communicates that, et cetera, to all of the rest of the neighbors, depending upon how it goes, of course. But at the same time, that phone call is just somebody at the other end of the phone and somebody that you can kind of hang up on.
Well, you could, you could make that, you could make that logic on your email blast and everything else. But what, can anybody tell me what HOA, what neighborhood of these...
Well, maybe you don't wanna mention it because it's public. Maybe.
This is Timber Ridge.
On, on this particular, I'm assuming this is behind at least one person's house or two people's houses. What about even a certified letter saying that, you know, you need to clean this up or else we're going to clean it up and we're going to charge you for it?
And that's what I was concerned about, is once we start this one-on-one communication, what's, you know, what's our scheme?
Well.
What are we gonna be able to enforce? Because what we don't wanna do is end up making a lot of phone calls and then not taking any action because that's gonna get around very quickly as well.
Correct.
Well, yeah, they're gonna call you, but you're not gonna do anything. Uh, so we have to kind of roll that out, like you're saying, to that next step. What are we gonna do once we start making those, those one-on-one contacts?
See, what you don't have is the ability to find, but what we, and this just popped into my little pea brain, Tony, if I'm wrong, tell me, but I think that if we had and created a list of these and sent out the letter you're suggesting and say, "We're gonna special assess you for the cleanup of this property," uh, since it's on public property, uh, around the lake, the preserve, whatever, then that might be permissible. But we'd have to have a public hearing, and it's not an easy just sending out a letter. I.
I would suggest that what we could do is, as part of that, number one, they're interfering with the use of the district easement appears, you know, the lakes and water management system. Uh, and sending out a letter saying they're doing that. They're also engaging in littering, which, you know, I don't know, they wanna get the county or law enforcement involved in that, but at the budget hearing time, if, if there is an additional cost incurred by virtue of the district going out to maintain its water management system and its easements in good condition in compliance with permits, cause technically the district may also be cited by an entity, if we're the operating entity, somebody could come out and say, "We're not complying with our permits." And we've been down that path before, unfortunately. Uh, and at the budget time, if we have a cost incurred by that time, Cal, or if we have an estimated cost, then we could, as part of our budget process, send out that separate letter and maybe do a separate notice to those people that we're going to impose a special assessment for that additional cost incurred that benefits their property only. Yep?
If you send the letter, though, the first communication is confronted as compared to one of, you probably don't understand, let me tell you what's going on, and I need your help before we have to take action. That's good.
Well, usually there's a letter process involved. You know, the first letter is regular mail, first two letters, and then you get a certified letter.
Well, some of these, some of these things, I'm just saying, are, have obviously gotten to a point where I think we need to have a knock on the door.
Okay.
Somebody just obviously doesn't care what their problem looks like. Yeah, yeah. Would you continue, please?
Um, that's basically, I mean, I could go through every one of these pictures and that's pointless. It just becomes badgering. So, we need to do something.
Okay. Um, item D consented, um, the GIS solutions, uh, was it Rod that asked to talk about that?
Yes, um, I'm asking the board here, colleagues, can you just give me a one-minute summary? Maybe Gary would, but I guess, I wasn't on the board when GIS were hired.
Yeah, David.
Can you just tell me, how many phases, uh, this is the fourth phase, if I understand it. Is this the last phase?
Not that I'm aware of.
And what, can you tell me what, why they were hired and what they're doing for us?
What were, and Ed, I think, can you help me with part of this? Cause you've been involved too. Alter, in, in the scheme of things, what would be the I, the ultimate database that we would have that would show all of the things, including all of our utilities, et cetera, from, that the GIS can concretely help us with?
I thought that's what we were having done, and I've asked for that for months. I don't know if the, if the guy is just delinquent in getting the stuff transferred over, but we haven't seen any of the utilities on the GIS yet. Haven't seen any of them.
This is why I'm asking the question, Ed, because I'm asked to, I'm asked to approve fourteen thousand dollars here. And I, I wasn't involved in the earlier phases, and I'm not actually clear in my mind what GIS was supposed to do for us and what they've done for us.
I think Danny could probably answer it better than I can, but I know what you're asking for is one of the things that we asked for.
Right.
And it was the issue of getting the drawings and putting that information on. I haven't seen it.
I can kinda go through the history and the phases and the steps.
Just one, just a couple of minutes. I don't wanna take a lot of the board's time, but I'm actually important to my vote. I wanna understand whether it's worth it.
Absolutely. Um, now where it sits today, I, I do think we're, you know, we're nearing that end. The, the easy, the low-hanging fruit was what GIS Solutions focused on first, and that was, you know, develop, the development of the overall map, tying that information into real property, um, getting all the, you know, the boundary information in. And, uh, the next step they did was start to input real data, um, as-built information. Um, there should be, um, utility information on there. Now, I have personally, I have not looked at the, the GIS system.
Well, I have.
And, and it should be, and you should have access to it then.
That's right.
And, and, and any board member.
It's a map like that, like it's on the wall there.
It's an interactive map.
It's an overlay.
It's, it's, it's like a stack of pancakes, that it has all the things from Lee County.
Yes.
And it has.
Permits.
Permits, and it has.
DOs.
Where the sewers are, where the manholes are, where all of the roads are, all of the stuff on it. And it's, it's, it's very interesting. If, if you had to go out and work on it.
Correct.
It would be a whale of a big improvement over where we've been all these years.
Yes.
When I was given the, uh, the first look at it by the man who puts it together.
David.
Thank you. Uh, I specifically asked him, "What about annual updates?" And he said, as I recall, "There will be necessarily up, uh, annual updates as more houses are constructed, da-da-da-da-da-da." And I said, "How much is that gonna cost us annually?" And he said, as I recall, "Five thousand dollars." So, I am somewhat surprised that the number has jumped from what I thought, five, to fourteen. And I'd like him or somebody to tell us why. Please.
Uh, this isn't an update. That, we're still building it. Um, and when I saw this come across, uh, on my desk, I, I saw that there's a Pelican, um, agreement and then a Gateway agreement. And so I wanted to know, you know, I, I could see that it was a fairly large investment that we were making, and I wanted to know who here was utilizing the software. So I reached out to Dave and, um, he explained the software to me, and we have, um, he's going to come in and do a demo, and we have established our team that we're going to do some training with him, because I wanna make sure that staff is contributing at this level, because it's very, um, like you said, it's very layered, and we can utilize it in a lot of different areas. Utilities is excited about using it, um, because we could use it for locates in the field. Um, and Elle's going to be using it on the natural resource side for her ponds and, and, and that area. Um, so we're trying to reinitialize it and make sure that we're actually learning how to use the software because it looks like it's very powerful. With that said, I also had a conversation with Dave to talk about, um, why it's taking so long, and Tyler and I had a good conversation. So he's getting a lot of maps and a lot of plans, but a lot of, a lot of them we cannot find. And so he's having to actually go up to the hot box, pull out the big maps, and he's.
The hot box is a place upstairs, right?
And he's actually, he's actually having to go from hard copy and recreate this in the software. So it's a very, um, it's a very intensive process of what he's going, what he's creating for us, and that's why it's gonna take several years. And I'm not sure when it, when it started, but this is not an update. We're still in the building phase.
Two comments. First of all, as, as I understand it, this is not the Pelican Preserve.
This is the Gateway side.
This is the Gateway side. Pelican Preserve side is separate, separate.
Right, that agreement was, was already, has already been, been, um, renewed.
Completed, good, right. But I, let me put it this way. I wanna know who's driving the bus. Are you driving the bus, telling him what, uh, you want on the maps on the computer, da-da-da-da, or is he driving the bus, putting things in that we may or may not need?
Um, I believe initially, probably the utilities manager was driving the bus. I think Yvonne was, was initially driving, and I think because of the transition of staff and that vacancy, that's probably why we've had a little bit of stall on, on this project. So now I'm trying to get it motivated again.
Get in the driver's seat.
I, I'm trying to get in the driver's seat and make sure that we're, um, getting the training on this and that we're actually going to learn how to utilize it. And since the staff here is going to be the ones utilizing it, I wanna make sure that they have some input. So if we have an opportunity to, to make this software the most effective that we can, um, that we, we have, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, I, I, I am with Bill on this. That's the right question, who was driving it. And I just, maybe you can't answer these today, but I'd like to know how much was spent up to date with this guy.
Okay.
And how many more phases are we gonna be faced with here? Is there an, is there a finishing post? I'd like to know. And, um, presumably this is coming out of the enterprise fund, so it would be Gateway, right? Is this where it's been funded out of?
Uh, yeah, actually, it's, uh, the capital projects fund.
Yeah, but is it coming out of the enterprise capital projects or the generals?
I don't know.
I'm guessing the enterprise.
It's coming out of the capital budget. I have it attached.
Yeah, I know, but which capital budget? It's probably the enterprise fund, rather.
Yeah, the enterprise fund.
Yeah, which means it's gotta be Gateway, not Pelican, right?
Yes, it's coming out of the enterprise capital.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. So I, I'd just like some answers to that, uh, going forward as to where we are in the, you know, in, where the finishing post is on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, there's gonna be no finishing post until all of the homes are built out.
Okay.
Okay. Now, as long as Hampton Park is continuing to build homes, uh, we'll want those, uh, updated at least annually. And when we get over to the Pelican side, uh, we've got, uh, Nancy. And when we get over to the Pelican side, uh, we've got, uh, Nancy, four hundred more homes to build over there, or better.
Presumably then that will come out of the, a different fund at that point? Not the, not the enterprise.
No, it's because of the enterprise.
Oh, the utilities, I understand, I'm sorry, I understand. So, I just wanna know that we're getting the benefits for what we're paying for.
April, I, after, after this discussion that you've just heard, are you, um, confident you want us to go ahead and, and, and vote on this fourteen today? Or with what you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you looking for approval on this?
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion.
We're gonna go, this is part of the consent agenda, and this is D.
Okay.
And you also, if you're finished with D, you want it to be.
It is part of the consent, you're correct. For E, yes.
It's Fairway Park's office, and I suspect that there's gonna be some conversation about this.
I think we oughta have a five-minute break.
Excellent. Board will stand and recess for ten minutes. Double that five.
There you go. I'll see you five double.